Well, good morning, everyone. Happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, the 24th of August, 2021, and we're located here at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. Calling our meeting to order this morning for the millage rate public hearing. This time, we are calling a meeting to order. We will start with the presentation, millage rate presentation video from our Public Relations Department.
What is the millage rate? Well, simply put, it's what you owe on taxes on your property. Each mil represents $1 for every $1,000 in property value. The Rockdale County Board of Commissioners has tentatively adopted a 2021 millage rate of 18.016 mils, which will require an increase in property taxes by 7.94%. Now, although the county would be keeping the same millage rate from last year, the state still views it as a tax increase because property values are going up, which is good news for residents who plan on selling their property in the near future, since their property value and home equity has increased. To help lower your tax bill, the homestead exemption and/or the homestead option sales tax, also known as host, can be applied to that amount. So, for instance, if your house is valued at $100,000, you would owe approximately $720.64 in taxes. But with both the homestead exemption and host exemption applied, you would only owe approximately $135.12. Similarly, if your house is valued at $250,000, you would owe approximately $1,801.60 in taxes. Now, after applying both the homestead exemption and the host exemption, you would only owe approximately $459.41. That's a lot of savings. So where exactly do these tax dollars go? Well, for every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives 18% or 18 cents. Let me repeat that. For every dollar paid in taxes, the county receives 18% or 18 cents. The remaining 82% goes toward the school system, which sets its own millage rate. The 18 cents from each dollar funds public safety, general government, court services, recreation, and transportation, which are all included in the general fund. We want to hear from you on what you have to say about this. So be sure to come out to one of the three public millage rate hearings. The first one will be held on Tuesday, August 17th, at 6:00 PM in the Assembly Hall located at 901 Main Street. The second will take place on Thursday, August 19th, at 9:00 AM at the JP Carr Community Center located at 981 Taylor Street. And the last public hearing will take place on Tuesday, August 24th, at 9:00 AM in the Assembly Hall located at 901 Main Street. After the 9:00 AM public hearing on August 24th, the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners will hold a called meeting immediately after at 9:30 AM to set the millage rate. Now, if the millage rate is adopted at 18.016 mils, it will stay the lowest it's ever been in seven years, when it was set at 20.7 mils in 2013. We certainly hope this helped you understand the millage rate better, and we're looking forward to seeing you at the upcoming public hearings.
Very good, and thank you to our Public Relations Department. At this time, we'll have Mr. Mac Underwood from Terminus to come up and give the millage rate presentation for 2021. Mr. Underwood, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, residents of Rockdale County. It gives me pleasure to come and do this presentation for the final time this morning. If we could bring the presentation up. This is the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners presentation of the proposed millage rate for 2021. Next slide. Here we have the budget allocation for the 2021 general fund budget summary. Public safety accounted for 49%. General government, 26%. Court services, 11%. Parking, recreation, 9%. And transportation, 5%. Next slide. This is a summary of the 2021 budget highlights. You can see that all current programs and services were funded. We had a balanced budget. One of the big keys that we had to deal with was the COVID pandemic and all of the PPE and cleaning services that had to be done. The next item that highlighted is public safety. The shared salary overtime and benefits, that was a critical part of it. Then also, public safety, again, the medical and mental health costs related to the NAF Care Agreement. And that contract does have an escalation clause in it. Then we have the stepping up initiative, which the county took a holistic view at looking at public safety and public health for mental health partnership. Then economic development. We increased the funding for economic development initiative. The parking and recreation department, we separated it and focused on implementing the master plan. Then we had EMA. We established a separate department focused on providing service to our residents. The same with animal control services, focused on providing services to our residents. And we do have a day and evening shift on animal services. Then we had the election cost. We had a runoff early January. Then we had another election in May or June. The 2021 revised budget is $80.3 million. Next slide. This is a slide of the tax digest history. You can see in 2009, we were at a high of about $2.8 million. Then we dropped to a low in 2013, about $1.87. And then it took until 2020 to get back to the $2.8 million digest range. And now we at $3.1 million. So it took almost 10 or 12 years to recover from the old nine stock market crash. Next slide. This is the millage rate history. And you'll see here in 2013, it was set at 20.7. It stayed 20 point something or above until 2019. And in 2021, it decreased to 18.02. And it's remained at that level now. Next slide. This process consists of the Board of Assessors really valuing people's property and coming up with the value of the houses. Then we have the budget for the Board of Commissioners, City of Rockdale, I mean, City of Conyers, and then the Board of Education. All of those three entities look at their budgets. And the final step is for the Tax Commissioner to use those budgets and actually set the actual millage rate. One mil equal $1 tax per 1,000 taxable value. Next slide. The overall property tax allocation, and this is something that we've tried to highlight, is that the county gets 18 cents out of every dollar paid for property taxes. The school board get 82% of those funds. So the county is operating its entire general fund off of 18% of the property tax allocation. Next slide. Then we take a look at the property tax calculation. And it's a sample property tax calculation based on 18.016 mils. And if your property is valued at $100,000, the estimated property tax without the exemption is $720.64. Then when you apply the homestead exemption and the host exemption, that decreases the property tax to $135.12. The same thing on property valued at $250,000. The estimated property tax without the exemption is $1,080.16. And with the homestead exemption and the host exemption, it decreases to $459.41. And this is only the county's portion of the property tax. Next slide, please. This slide shows the host remittance and the host exemptions. And the host remittance ranged from about $12 million in 2010 to about $16 million in 2020. Then the host exemptions ranged from still about $12 million in 2012 to a high of about $20 million in 2020. Next slide. The proposed millage rate, based on where we are right now, is 18.016. It will generate property taxes of $58 million. The county has non-property tax revenue of 22.3, which means the county will get a total revenue in 2021 of $80.357 million. And the proposed millage rate is 18.016. Next slide, please. Of course, in our timeline, this is our final public hearing. And the millage rate will be set immediately after this public hearing. With that, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, we'll take any questions from you all.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Underwood?
No.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation. At this time, we'll move right on into public comment. Currently, I have three public comment cards of speakers who've already requested to participate in public comment. If there are any additional cards or interest of speaking, please submit your red comment card at this time. If you have an interest of speaking, this would be the perfect time to go ahead and submit your red comment card. Executive Director Reynolds, I ask that you read the disclaimer, and then I'll call up my first speaker.
So, Mr. Chairman, this morning during this public hearing, each speaker will have three minutes per speaker relative to the millage rate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. First up is Mr. George Kellecheck. Come on up, Mr. Kellecheck.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, citizens of Rockdale County. In this present crisis, government is not the solution to our problem. Government is the problem. The solutions we seek must be equitable, with no one group being singled out to pay a higher price. It's a quote from Ronald Reagan, President of our United States. Just a few items to show you around the state. Putnam County has to reduce their budget by a half a million dollars. Has to. Putnam County increase for taxes in 2017 was minus 4.67%. This year, they're looking at a proposed 2% increase. Rockdale Boards of Education reducing their millage rate. If this proposal goes through at 7.9%, over, since this administration has come into effect, you will have over a $25 million increase in budget. Yes, the ACC did recommend that you go away for retreat to Chateau L'Isle. Having a background in management psychology, completely understand it. But you don't have to. You can utilize costly mil. You can utilize motels here in Rockdale County if you want to know each other. I say shop the rock. From '07 to '09, during my 30-year career with American Honda Motor Company in the private sector, we didn't go on any lavish retreats. We had our meetings at the Holiday Inn Express in Alpharetta, Georgia. So, I say yes. The government, I've been told by directors in this administration that this government exists to provide services to the citizens. Sooner or later, we have to take a hard look at our services. And I say we do not need a tax increase with the additional funds that are coming in from the federal and state government currently. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kellecheck. And thank you for all that you do on behalf of all of our citizens here in Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. Carl Epps. Mr. Epps, come on up, sir.
Good morning, Lord. My name is Carl Epps. This is my first meeting being here today. And kind of reiterating what George has touched on. My neighbor and I was talking about taxes going up, even though on the slide it shows how in the past seven years, taxes have not gone up that much. To the average homeowner, a person nowadays who's trying to survive, that's only like one area in their life that they have to pay out money to. A lot of times, what you got to look at now is you got seniors who may have one or two incomes coming in. They still have a mortgage. They still have food. And they still have medicine. My thing is, if you would, the board would take a second hardcore look at what's going to happen when you start forcing some of those seniors out of their homes. Where they going to go? Is the county, they're going to turn around and support them from being homeless? All the states, everything is going up. So no, really, nobody can really move. So my thing is for right now, is like George had just been saying, is to kind of keep your budget the way it is and try to operate the way things are. I mean, everybody's going up. Eventually, price is going to have to come down. I mean, it just can't go on the way it is. And right now, as I look around Rockdale and Conyers, I see businesses coming in. I see new homes developing all over the place. So that means that's more revenue. Is that revenue not already calculated into the tax? If not, then maybe there need to be a second look taken after. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. Thank you for all that you do on behalf of all of our citizens here in Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. Nick Duvall. Come on up, Mr. Duvall.
Yes. I have a hearing, and I have a hard time hearing, and the mask makes it even worse. Anyhow, first of all, I wanted to commend you all for, you know, all you do. A lot of times, in areas where we have some type of epidemic, or like in the past when we had a housing crisis and things like that, the counties tended to not be able to provide the same quality of service as they did. But what I've seen, and I guess I've been here like 15 years or so now, you know, the quality of service has always continued to be there for us. The presentation, I thought, was great because it answered a lot of questions that I normally have. As far as the property taxes go, well, if our property is worth more, then the taxes are going to go up. And there's more services that you have to provide. So while no one likes property taxes going up, it's better than property values going down, if I put it that way. But I was curious, it looks like this epidemic is going to continue now. Were there investments made in the past that are going to make it easier? This, I mean, this time, like the schools, for example, you know, they had to buy a lot of computers, I guess, for students and figure out how to teach people at home and all that. Is it going to make it a little bit easier this time for the county to be able to continue providing services, even if this epidemic continues for another six months or so?
Well, what I'll say to that is that we now have a playbook. We have a pandemic playbook. Prior to the pandemic, we didn't have a playbook. We basically was just like the rest of the world. It was learn as you go. We've learned a lot over the last 18-plus months in terms of what we need to do to navigate through. As relate to the local school system and the equipment and supplies, that's an answer that have to come from the school board and/or the school superintendent. But as relates to the county government, we, between our human resources, talent management department, and all of our departments, we now have a go-to manual as to how to respond as we continue to navigate through this pandemic.
Okay, yeah. I have one last question. Maybe it's a little off-subject. But I was curious whether or not additional businesses are coming into the community than we had, you know, a year ago or two years ago. I know a lot got shut down, but I'm wondering if the structure is there for...
Surprisingly enough, Mr. Duvall, there has been a good number of business startups in and around Rockdale County. A few new businesses have relocated here to Rockdale County during the pandemic. Entrepreneurs have started some of their dream businesses. And first-time small business owners have also opened up shop during the pandemic here in Rockdale County. That's yet to be determined and measured or benchmarked into how the outcome of those businesses will be. It's our prayer and our hope that they'll be successful and they'll be able to thrive moving forward as we all look forward to coming out of this pandemic. So yes, there's been some new businesses.
I was going to throw this away a long time ago.
I wish you could have. Absolutely.
Anyhow, okay, well, you know, just again, thank you all for all you do. I'm happy in the county, you know. And I'm sure with you all doing your jobs as you do, that I'll continue to be happy.
Thank you so much. And thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. Larnell Flanagan. Come on up, Mr. Flanagan.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I've been a resident of Rockdale County for almost 14 years now. And I'm a recent retiree working in the public school sector as a teacher, as an administrator, and later as a university professor and administrator. And of course, we all look forward to the day that we can eventually retire after a very successful career. And I had 44 years in public school and public education. All to say is that it's a career path that was successful, but it's not very lucrative. It pays a decent salary, and you earn the appropriate amount during your retirement. But you don't become rich as a consequence. And I'm saying all of that to say that as retiree, this is a heavy burden on those who have retired, who have a fixed income, who have a certain amount of money to allocate each year, each month, to live off of. And so with this increase, it's going to add over $900 a year for me alone to pay my property taxes. And I don't see, based on this projection and based on the millage rate for the school board portion, I don't see a major discount. It's a major increase of over $500 for my portion. And I understand the need, you know, to keep our public schools up and current with the proper staff and equipment and needs as an educator. And I know you just finished a beautiful central office facility, which was needed. But again, all of this cannot be brought on the burdens of the working poor, the middle class, the seniors, who have to share a burden of this tax revenue increase. And of course, as you've heard over and over again, we are still living through a pandemic. Individuals are adversely affected by that in terms of income. With all the prices going up for food, clothing, lodging, housing, et cetera, we all are dealing with increase in cost of living. And I'm sure all of you are dealing with the same situation as we all are. To say that we just don't have sufficient revenue to expect the taxpayer to take on this burden and responsibility alone. And it shouldn't be their responsibility alone. From the American Recovery Act, Georgia was allocated $17.4 billion of that for the federal relief and infrastructure funds. $4.9 billion allocated to the state to support counties and cities with their deficits over the last 18 months. Between DeKalb, Gwinnett, Rockdale, and Newton Counties, they would share $358 million. So you do have some revenue coming in. And I think you have to stay within your fiscal constraints to use whatever funds. But again, this is quite a burden for regular taxpayers to bear. And also, by state law, you don't have to make that final decision today. So I hope you weigh all these considerations, listen to your taxpayers, the ones that you want to burden this heavy cost and how it's going to affect them and their families. It is a major burden for individuals, especially those who have retired, like myself. I was hoping to live retirement years without major debt or without any major expenses. And this would be a major expense to my annual budget. Thank you for your time, and hopefully more prudent consideration will be taken.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. We certainly do appreciate what you do on behalf of all of the citizens in Rockdale County. Throughout this process of the millage rate budget hearing, one of the things that I've been explaining and really taking my time to explain, as did the video, the different entities in our community who benefit from the tax collection. It's often confused that the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners are responsible for the school system, and we're not. The school system, you being a prior educator, you know, comes under the Board of Education and the school superintendent. So the beautiful facility that is the new central office of the Rockdale County Public School System is under the Board of Education. It's not part of the budget of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners. Just always want to make sure that I continue to bring forth that point of clarity. Because oftentimes, people think that we're in charge of the school teachers, school buses, lunchroom employees, schools and buildings and teachers, and we're not. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out. And each entity, just like the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, each entity, the City of Conyers as well as the Rockdale County Public School System have their own board meeting or council meeting that's open to the public. Want to make sure that folks know which entity to go and express their concerns as relate to not just the budget, but anything coming out of those particular authorities that does not fall under the Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much. Are there any other persons interested? I want to make sure before Commissioners, before we wrap this up, I want to make sure that we afford every person an opportunity to let his or her voice be known who want to express their concerns and views regarding the military rate here in Rockdale County. Mr. Dugan, come on back up if you would.
You showed the percentage between the county and the school, okay, the eighteen eighty-two. Has that always been the same ratio, or has it deviated at all over the years?
The school system here in Rockdale County has been for a number of years the highest collector of local taxes. As the pie chart demonstrated, eighty-two percent of all of the taxes collected here in Rockdale County goes to the local school system, the Board of Education. Eighteen percent, or eighteen cents on each dollar, comes here to provide a fire department, a sheriff's office, parks and recreation, senior services, roads, bridges, transportation, county maintenance, and a host of other things that I'm not at time, we don't have enough time to list. So we take eighteen percent of all of the taxes collected, and we operate your local government. Eighty-two percent goes to running the schools, building schoolhouses, paying for teachers, school buses, employees, you name it, they operate. We have over, slightly over sixteen thousand young people enrolled in Rockdale County Public School System.
Okay, let me rephrase my question a little bit. What I was asking was, okay, this year it's eighteen eighty-two. Like, last year was it eighteen eighty-two, and the year before? I mean, is that typically what the ratio is, or has the school budget side been?
Well, last year, the Board of Commissioners elected to do a rollback last year.
Okay.
So there hasn't been any change or significant change in terms of the military rate itself since 2019, if I'm correct there. So we will see shortly as to decision of the board here this morning about the 2021 military rate.
Okay. But more than likely, the school costs in the county, are they increasing more than the, I'll say administrative and police and fire?
I cannot speak to the level and the maturity of the increases related to the school system. That's a whole different budget. This is enough for me to manage right here, attempt to manage for the Board of Commissioners. The school board have their own operating budget, and they manage that. But that's a great question for them at one of their board meetings.
Okay. And how do I find out about those?
They have a, they are a government entity, so they have a website, just like the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners have a website. The state of Georgia has one. The city of Conyers has a website. So I would encourage folks to go to their websites, navigate yourself through the website, and determine which office, and they may have even listed the times and dates of their meetings so that the public can come out and be a part of it. Absolutely. Check out their website.
Right. And they're doing a great job, too. They have, we don't have any children, but we have friends that have had children, and, you know, the education they've gotten now, say, versus what it might have been ten years ago is dramatically improved. I mean, they get scholarships to go to college and things like that that I think were a little more difficult for them to understand how to navigate that system.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. All right. I think Director Rolich, that pretty much wraps up public comment. I'm going to move now to board comments from, and I'll start with Commissioner Washington. Commissioner?
Sure. I've been relatively quiet, which is, I don't think that's necessarily my MO. But I did want to listen to everybody and take into consideration everybody's concerns and understand, and I want people to understand that we do have the hard task of sitting and listening to what is needed to move this county progressively forward and understanding that we are doing it with the contributions of the citizens. But what I think a lot of people miss in the military rate allocation is that we're actually setting the military rate on what was, on the budget that we set last year. So in 2020, we set the budget for 2021, and now we're getting ready to collect on what we've spent for last year. And I think that last year, we did take a rollback. I think somebody disputed that at one of the hearings last year, earlier. But we did take a rollback because we, as a board, were very, very concerned about the pandemic. And we were the first people, Mr. Kelicak, in this community to take the rollback. We did it, and no other community around here took the rollback last year because we were concerned about the pandemic and all of, we didn't, we just weren't sure. So we said, let's be safe and let's steady everything and see what we can do. So we went and set a budget in 2020 based off of the, of a projected revenue stream for this year. I think what I'm hearing from the citizens this year is that, yes, there, and when you read the paper, you see that there's supposed to be a five mil increase or whatever. And you're, and it's like an eight percent or nine percent increase. And you're saying, what is tangible that we are seeing that justifies this increase, especially in a pandemic, especially in a time that everybody is still uncertain? You just said the pandemic is still raging. We're still trying to keep steady the eviction rolls. We're working on programs for that homelessness. I have a homeless woman who's camped out at the front of my subdivision right now. We're, it's, everything is becoming more prevalent. So I think the citizens are saying, what have we done? What have you all done for us to justify this increase? Because to the citizens, they don't see, the community isn't cleaner. They don't see any better aesthetics. They, we haven't put systems in place to get the water bills regulated. We haven't done enough, in their minds, to justify a eight percent increase in value. And I know we said that, I mean, in taxes. And I know that we've said that we have capital improvement projects coming for next year. But I don't think that we've holistically thought about all the revenues that we can use to move capital improvements forward. Also, I think the citizens are seeing places like the Tax Commissioner's Office underfunded, but yet still, the Board of Commissioners are getting more personnel. And they're seeing, if you were at the budget hearings, you hear how the District Attorney's Office that are, is directly serving the citizens, has been asking for personnel for years. Yet, we haven't addressed that issue even in this 2021 budget. So for me, I believe that this year, I'm going to listen to the people and keep the military rate, I will roll back the military rate, keep the budget where it is. And hopefully, we're going into our new budget cycle. And hopefully, this budget will be more reflective of value so that when we come to you next year, because we can't roll, I can't imagine us being able to roll back three years in a row. You all will see a budget, you all will see a reason for you all to come before us and say, you know what? I see it. It's worth it to me. I see it. I understand it. I can pay a few dollars more because I see the changes in your community. And that's where I am.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Williams?
So my sentiments are very much similar to Commissioner Washington's. And it does, like she said, we really can't even consider that we would take a rollback rate next year. We have a courthouse that is woefully inadequate. The district attorney was just pleading with us for space and for personnel. The judges have all said, we desperately need more space. We have a new state court judge coming in January. We have no, we have no place to put a new state court judge. But I think you must know that you, we will be working on these plans. We will submit, let you see an overall plan of how we will spend those extra dollars next year so that, like Commissioner Washington said, you will know what you're getting for your money. But for this year, because of some of the extra federal funding and the highly unusual escalation of property values, we've never seen anything like this in Rockdale County. Decatur, Atlanta, some of those places have had explosive property value raises, increases. But this has not ever really happened in Rockdale County. So it's kind of a new thing for us to look at. So at this point, I also will be voting for the rollback rate.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. So at this point, Director Rolich, I think it's appropriate to close out this portion, and then we will just, Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Do you want to just roll right into taking the official vote?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. I think with their time wise, anyway.
Yes.
All right. Very good. So the public hearing portion of our meeting this morning is now adjourned. However, the board will now call, I'll call the meeting back to order and call for the vote in terms of the military rate here in Rockdale County. So we're calling the meeting to order today. Again, it's Tuesday, August the twenty-fourth, 2021. We're here at 901 Main Street. We are calling our vote to order in terms of the 2021 military rate resolution. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Excuse me. I moved to set the 2021 military rate at sixteen point six nine zero and the host at seventy percent and to adopt this resolution setting the 2021 military rate and host percentage.
I second the motion.
It has been properly motioned and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Are there any need for public comment at this time?
I don't have anybody signed up for this particular meeting, Mr. Chairman.
All right. You have a unanimous vote that the military rate will be rolled back. All three Commissioners have voted the same way. Board comments at this time?
Well, you know, it's always a pleasure when all three of us independently are on the same page because, you know, we don't talk to each other about county business. And I don't think, we knew where Commissioner Williams was by Facebook, but nobody knew where the other two of us were. And I think that all three of us are listening to the voices of the people, understanding what times we are in. But with us saying that, you all have to understand that we still have a fiduciary duty to govern this county, and we still have to make plans on next year because we do have a courthouse that is woefully in need of everything. We do have personnel that we're still trying to get up to a market rate of pay, which is one of the reasons why your water bills are late because we don't have the adequate staffing. We're still losing people because we can't pay them what they could get in other jurisdictions. We have to address all of those issues. And the way we do it is by tax dollars mostly, and these are your tax dollars. That courthouse is your courthouse. That's your house. And when people come to, that courthouse is a reflection on this community and its values. We have people that work for us, that work hard every day. You would be hard pressed to walk through these buildings and not find people with their heads to the grindstone, working for this community. You see the trucks out everywhere. But what we will do, what I commit to, is bringing you a budget this year that is reflective of tangibles, things that you all can see in the community so that you can see where your money is going. And then we're going to work on having a beautiful house for us over across the street and here so that you can see where your money's going, so that next year, when we can't roll back the military rate, you'll understand why.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Williams?
Well, I had no idea, of course, where the two of you were. I walked in this morning not having a clue of how this was going to go. I appreciate, I appreciate the thinking that has gone into this and that you two came to the same conclusion. I think it's, I just think it's important that we consider all of the, you know, extra unusual kinds of things that have happened in this last year. And like you said, we now have a playbook for the pandemic. And we can move forward, and we will move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I will call this meeting adjourned. So we will now transition right on into, you want to take a quick break?
Yes, please.
Let's take, let's take a ten-minute break. We'll be back, let's just say, at our normal time at 10 o'clock. We'll start our commission meeting at 10 a.m.
Gotcha.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're calling our meeting to order. This is Tuesday, August the twenty-fourth, 2021, and 10 a.m. We're here at the Assembly Hall at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. We're calling our Board of Commissioners regularly scheduled meeting to order at this time. We'll ask that our good friend Pastor Eric Lee, the senior pastor of Springfield Baptist Church, come and lead us in a word of invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Lee?
I begin by acknowledging the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of this, of the founding of this county. I also acknowledge the fifty-fifth birthday of our chairman. I also acknowledge my fiftieth birthday next month. What a monumental time to be alive.
Them fives are alive. The number of grace.
Amen.
Amen.
What an honor to be alive, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to pray, and I will do what I've been assigned to do. God, we thank you today in advance of our pledge of allegiance to the flag. We pledge allegiance to the God of our creation. And God, as we seek to pledge allegiance to you and to the flag, we recognize and acknowledge that United Nations, the United States have devolved into divided tribes. But I pray now, God, that the same God who united us by the blood of Christ is able to unite us with the love of Christ. I pray for every pastor and every community of faith, and every church in this county. I pray for every school and every administrator, every bus driver, every staff member. I pray, God, for the governance that you've provided to us at the county level and the city level of Conyers. And I pray, God, for this session. I thank you, God, that we're able to disagree with Christian amicable behavior. I thank you now, God, for what must take place in the minutes and the moments to come. And we praise your name for all of the people who seek to be a solution to the problems, to the pandemic, and to the things that cause us to be less than we ought to be. Now, God, touch, heal, and deliver from our wealthiest citizens to our least wealthy citizens. May there be peace that surpasses all understanding. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as a public relations statement, Chairman, Springfield Baptist Church is open today for vaccination test, or excuse me, for COVID testing five days a week in conjunction with our health department, and that has begun today.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you so much. And we certainly do appreciate all of the work that Springfield Baptist Church does here in Rockdale County on behalf of all of our citizens. And the one thing that we'd like to point out is that Springfield doesn't limit its services to members of their congregation. It serves the entire community. I'm so glad to hear that they're doing the COVID testing again. They were also one of the sites for vaccinations for quite some time here in the community during the heart of the pandemic. So it's good to know that they're open to the public. And if you want to communicate with Pastor Lee, just see him shortly there, and you'll be able to get more information about what he has going on at Springfield. But thank you so much, Pastor, for leading us in invocation this morning. Special recognitions, do we have any this?
I have none this morning.
Okay. All right. No special recognition, Commissioners. We're going to try to keep it moving here. Item number four, the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, approval of the minutes from August 10th, 2021, and August 17th of 2021, August 19th, and August 20th of 2021.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions or concerns? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There's no unfinished business at this time. We're moving straight on to the consent agenda. Commissioners?
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as listed below.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions or concerns about the items listed on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item?
Hold on. I don't think that people understand. Hold on, I don't think that people understand where we are and what time it is right now.
Y'all might set a record.
Right, we just, he might beat my record today.
And, uh, you sound a little bit delayed right now, so.
Okay.
Item number eight to the regular agenda, Commissioners, Executive Director Rulich.
Item 449 is an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 definitions, Sections 218-1 permitted use table, Section 218-13 standards of use and development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding floors. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first read and refer this ordinance to the planning commission.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 450, please.
Item 450 is an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 definitions, Sections 218-1 permitted use table, Section 218-13 supplemental standards of use and standards of use and development, and Section 222-2 parking space requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding various types of dwelling. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
Commissioners, your pleasure?
I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the planning commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Ooh.
Okay.
What in the world?
All right.
All right.
Uh, we are now down to bo- uh, public comment. I'm gonna start by having Executive Director Rulich read the disclaimer. Currently, I have one red comment card. Uh, we're at public comment. So if you wish or desire to, um, submit a comment, you can fill out a card and, and get it to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an inappropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
So far, I have only one comment card, Mr. George Kellacek. Come on up, Mr. Kellacek.
Good morning, again, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, citizens of Rockdale County, just a few items, uh, I like to bring out. I always say that people are down on what they're not up on. But as, uh, the county is moving forward, uh, regarding the budgetary process and other items that you have going forward, um, the county retirement program in 2016 was $17 million. And via O, uh, the open records request that I have, for this year, it is now at $34 million, okay? So as we move forward, and I do work with many counties throughout the state of Georgia, um, I would offer a recommendation, and I know that you have outsourced some items, but as you move forward and you having to carry this heavy burden on the taxpayers to fund retirement, uh, I would ask that you look at, you know, some, uh, areas that you could possibly outsource and not have that burden as you move forward for our children and our grandchildren. I know that American Honda Motor Company in 2014, I retired in 2012, in 2014, they did away with the monthly pension program that I have. They went to a straight 401K program. They reduced their staff by over 30% throughout the United States. And we still operate very highly with a reduction in force. Also, um, I think it would be an excellent recommendation. I know I go to the Board of Education meetings and Keith Hall, the Board of Education CFO, at every meeting, he gives an update of the expenses versus the budget. Uh, I would call on Mark Lewis of maybe trying to, and I know the numbers are dynamically changing day to day. Uh, but to be able to provide the citizens a monthly update on how the Board of Commissioners and the county is doing versus the actual budget. So those are the, uh, two items. The last one, I had the opportunity to attend the open forum uh, at your, uh, director's presentations for the budget, uh, for the upcoming year. And there's been a lot of discussion about adding another department and a director for, uh, community relations is the way I kind of understood it. But I would take into consideration, I emailed this information to you, is maybe have an 800 line to start with and staff it with volunteers from over the 300 churches that we have here in Rockdale County. So before you, uh, take off, if we were to say, maybe let's throttle back a little bit and have some more discussion and possibly look at an 800 number that could be staffed with volunteers, have an office at Restoration Storehouse, and utilize some of the things that the taxpayers have invested in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kellacek, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. Have no other pu- public comment cards at this time. I'm gonna move right on into board comments, starting with Commissioner Washington.
Well, I don't have a lot to say. We're gonna be out for the next three weeks. So you all will miss my birthday. I know you're sad. But, um, I, I am, um, like I said earlier, um, I don't wanna say enjoying, but I'm looking forward to starting this budget process and, and really hammering down on the needs of the community. Um, um, and that's about it.
All right, Commissioner Williams.
I don't really have a whole lot of comments either. Um, uh, in response to Mr. Kellacek's comment about retirement, that, that is one benefit to our county employees. And, um, that does, for some, that makes a difference in longevity and, um, and in pay. Um, it's also more stable than a 401K. Um, I know that companies have gone to 401Ks, but I know I appreciate my teacher retirement from the state, um, because it's stable and I can count on it. Um, I don't think I have anything else to say this morning.
All right, well, your actions certainly speak louder than your words. And, um, I want to start off by saying to both Commissioners, happy birthday.
Yes.
The entire Board of Commissioners celebrates September birthdays, and we're on the brink of the month of September getting started. So happy birthday to Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, as the three of us will be celebrating our September birthdays this fall next month. Also want to say, uh, thank you to the staff and all of our team who worked very diligently, uh, throughout the year to get to this point of making a decision regarding the millage rate and all of the work that has been put into motion to make sure that myself and the two Commissioners have been educated about where we are financially as well as the forecast, the future forecast for Rockdale County. As stated by both Commissioners, we have a lot at stake. Uh, we certainly do need a new courthouse and a courthouse expansion. That is a, a big project here in the county. As stated before, we are expecting, we will be, uh, getting a new state court judge. Right now, we currently don't have an office, a space, or place to put that individual. Uh, we're also looking at ways to capitalize on some of the earmarked funds that are coming out of the federal government, not just the ARPA funds, uh, but there's other, um, opportunities that's coming from the federal government that we can actually roll out here locally in the streets in Rockdale County to support our local citizens. Also want to take a moment because yesterday while at the grocery store, I ran into a young lady that said, where do I go to get help for eviction assistance? Let me make it plain and very clear. The, the Georgia State Department of Community Affairs, DCA, the Department of Community Affairs is the state department who has been awarded the funds to deal with rental assistance and eviction assistance, not Rockdale County. We don't have a person or an office or an entity within county government. We do encourage you to go to the website for the state of Georgia and click on the Department of Community Affairs. It's the state agency that comes under the state government who has been authorized to administer and govern over those funds. There are several people who are in need of that money. They're in need of that assistance. We want to make sure you go into the proper agency or entity, should I say, Chief K, to make sure that you're tapping into the source. Once again, it's the Department of Community Affairs, uh, that deals with, uh, eviction and rental assistance, not a local entity here in Rockdale County. I also want to wrap up by making mention very clearly. I think one of the biggest things that came out of this, uh, millage rate hearing and this whole budget process up until this point, uh, and I have to commend our Public Relations Department who've done a fine job teaching and explaining the different entities in our community. The City of Conyers, Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, and the Rockdale County Public School System. Oftentimes, people get them all twisted and confused. We here at the Board of Commissioners, we're not in charge of the schools. We're not in charge of hiring teachers, bus drivers, building schoolhouses. There's a different government entity called the Rockdale County Public School System, the Board of Education, who operates with the CEO known as the Superintendent of Schools. And then there's the City of Conyers. We only have one city inside of Rockdale County, and that's the City of Conyers. They do have a mayor and they do have a city council. We work in concert when it comes to a, a community collaborative to take care of the citizens as a whole. But each of us have our own individual and separate operating budgets to get the job done. So I want to say thank you to Director Joe Gumm, uh, again, who has hit the ground running here in Rockdale County. But he and his team have done a fantastic job explaining all of that. I noticed, Commissioners, throughout the process, we had several questions from people who were confused as to what we are responsible for as the Board of Commissioners. And I think it was most helpful to continue. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that we continue to play that video and, and educate the piece concerning the separate entities, which I know he has a separate video that does that and talk about it, but to make sure that we clear up the confusion about who is responsible for what. So I'm really excited about that. I'm proud of the fact that there's a level of understanding moving throughout the community as to where citizens need to properly go to voice their concerns about, uh, budget and budgetary items and concerns. Um, are there any other comments from the Commissioners?
The, um, Summer Concert Series, if, I don't remember the details, but I know you do.
Yes, so let me see, can I get it right? Uh, so the Summer Concert Series will take place this Sunday at Johnson Park. Uh, I think it starts at 4:00 p.m., 4:00 p.m. And the musical artist this time is Unknown Lyric. This was a dynamic duo with a wonderful violin. Uh, this guy really makes a violin just about talk. He plays it so well. So we're, we're gonna have food and beverage vendors on site. Uh, we ask, it's a family affair, so be sure to come. It's free at Johnson Park. And I think the address is 1781 Ebenezer Road. We're also gonna be doing the grand opening of Johnson Park at the same time. We've added an indoor walking track, a brand new state-of-the-art, uh, gym equipment and gym. We've expanded the, uh, pool area. We have an indoor pool, of course, but we've expanded that area inside. And then there's a new gym altogether and some other breakout rooms and sessions. We're also excited about, on Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., our hometown hero, Grady Jarrett, a graduate of Rockdale County High School, who number 97, who plays for the Atlanta Falcons. We will be dedicating our teen center, the teen center housed and located inside of Johnson Park under the name of Grady Jarrett. So that's a big deal, 5:00 on Tuesday. Don't get the two days confused. There's a lot more information about that on our website that you can visit. But we're encouraging the public to come out. We're super excited about this teen center for the young people. And certainly glad to be partnering with, uh, Grady Jarrett and being able to come back home and give back to the community and talk about those things that are positive for young people here in Rockdale County. Have I left out anything? I think we pretty much covered all. You want to give the dates?
Yeah, I, I would like to do that.
Yes.
For the next Board of Commissioners meeting. The next time that we will meet here will be the work session for Tuesday, September 21st. It will be an evening work session, 7:00 p.m. And then, of course, the following Tuesday, September 28th, 10 a.m. voting session.
Very good. Uh, Executive Director Rulich, is there any for legis- uh, executive session this morning?
No, Mr. Chairman, none of the above.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Tuesday. This meeting is adjourned.
Let's clap. Yay! This is his record, y'all.